You can sit next to me.
Oh, we're not.
Yes, you can.
I'll explain to you the community center around here.
Oh.
How do they council, the, how do they council members?
Is this the hall?
Uh, well, this is an afternoon.
This is the hall, the hall.
Okay. And typically we have all the hours set up, but we had a different meeting.
Hello?
Hi.
There.
Ten minutes.
Such a beautiful day.
How are you?
Good.
Apparently we're having a study session.
Study session.
Study session. I can get to it. Yes, it's a study session that's part of the, right, where we need executive sessions, study sessions, and session. Today is a study session.
So the study session is going to be presenting the recovery plan from the Jackson County Long-Term Recovery Group. It's the regional recovery plan. It's going to be very informative and really good information. So if you are here, if you can't got the time to be here, this is a good night to be here.
Okay, good. Thank you for starting with Plano transcript.
Yeah.
Mike, can you go find Alex Campbell?
I'm texting him.
Okay.
I just told him to revert.
He doesn't know where it is. So I told him it's the old town model.
Oh, he's in the meeting.
I'll put those up.
Yeah, thanks.
Maybe stick your head out here, just call. The old one on the outside.
He did hear us.
Can I have your eyes to talk a little louder?
Yeah.
It's like you turn your heads and talk to each other and they don't hear.
Yeah, so when you, is this better?
Much better.
Yeah, so when, uh, it's also better for the recording when you speak right into the microphone.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yeah, sir, can you just bring it up right to you? Oh, hi.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Got it. So Matt went to go find Alex Campbell. But he'll be in shortly. Thank you. Has anybody heard from Jason Hector?
I have not.
Okay. I'm gonna catch you real quick.
This one has a word, is that jazz?
Oh, yeah. That's their song here lately.
That's a good one, yes.
It's a very cool one.
Yeah, they, they could not.
Yeah, yeah. We call this still.
They have a whole team of graphic designers who keep all their swag up to some point.
How do we give the railroad a picture of that?
Um, send a email into the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And it's jaybrooklyn@cityaccountant.org.
City what?
Jay Brooklyn, R-O-K-L-Y-N. There's a deep, uh, there's a deep city manager's email on our website.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make sure that this seems the right one.
Great, thank you. Hector's gonna hook you up. I'm gonna text, um, Jason, oh, there he is. And then on wires, I guess he knows. Have you seen it? Oh, thank you, yeah.
That was just urban 14.
You busy, councilors?
Yeah.
All right. Ready, you want Hector?
I'm ready to hear.
Okay. So, uh, we will call the town, the council study session of May twenty-fourth. For a roll call, please.
Council of Clark.
Here.
Council of Renner.
Here.
Council of Reddies absent. Council of Castillo.
Here.
Council of Bires absent. Council of Corrigan.
Here.
And Mayor of Earths Club.
Here.
Mayor of Reform.
Thank you for the record at seven oh two, uh, in the evening. Uh, staff, uh, the next item on the agenda is discussion of the regional recovery plan. Are you introducing?
I'd like to welcome Karen Miller and Mr. Barry to present their original recovery plan.
Hi, yes. Uh, my name is Karen Miller Clay. I am the executive director of Jackson County Community and Long-Term Recovery Group. Um, and Barry Long, Urban Design Associates is here today to talk to us about sort of where we are in the road reimagined of our regional long-term recovery planning process. Um, we're also really grateful that we have, um, a representative from O H T S, Oregon Housing and Community Services, Alex Campbell. Um, and Business Oregon, we have Barnes and Ferencze and Jeff.
Stout.
Stout. Um, and then we also have Tessa Elitar, LTRG staff as well. So grateful to be here. Thank you for having us. Yes, the plans were, this beautiful plan was brought to you by Red Cross and Business Oregon. Thank you so much.
Okay. And again, if you just speak right into the microphone, it's a little tedious, but.
A few words from Mayor, so let me know if I'm pulling back, but. Well, good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, again, Barry Long from Urban Design Associates, we'll be better known just as E D A. Um, we're working in support of the long-term recovery group and the communities on the long-term recovery plan. And I have a presentation to share with you. This is a study session. We're not presenting final recommendations. We look forward to hearing your comments, questions, uh, things that we will be incorporating into the final plan. We'll do the schedule, but tonight's opportunity to listen to you, and we look forward to that after a, about a fifteen-minute presentation. Okay, so on the screen behind you. Uh, the agenda. So in my presentation, I'm going to go through the schedule, uh, where we are right now, the three-step planning process that we've been engaging in, uh, the recovery plan update, where we are right now, and then, uh, next steps. But again, the most, and next steps that we're going to be taking over the summer. Most important thing tonight, though, we want to emphasize is listening, listening to you. So the schedule, um, we're meeting with a jurisdiction this week. We'll also be meeting with other jurisdictions in two weeks. And, uh, in June, we started, um, an online and in-person preference survey for the residents and stakeholders, and that's going to run through June. I'll explain that as part of my presentation, and in July. We, uh, expect actually to be back before you on about the three-year anniversary of the, uh, twenty-twenty fires with final recommendations. So that would be, um, early September is our target date. And we'll be working hard over summer to make that work. We'll also be issuing a draft for you to review in advance, so you and your staff can get his comments before we come back with final recommendations. So we've been through a three-step process. We call it, um, listening, exploring ideas, and then choosing the best path forward. We have been listening to residents and conservative organizations, um, for many months now. But, uh, we're into the second step, exploring ideas for recovery projects. We'll be sharing that with you tonight. And then over the summer, we'll be choosing the best path forward and confirming that with you. We want to emphasize that with our process, listening happens throughout. It's not, it is step one, but step one is an umbrella over the entire process. And that's the foundation of the plan. So the recovery, uh, plan organization that you will be seeing, uh, follows federal guidelines. Uh, they have, uh, way to recovery plans. They ask them to be done, and you respect that. However, we've customized the plan here for Jackson County because, well, for a couple of reasons. One is the fire happened over thirty months ago. Uh, fires happened over thirty months ago, and we're in a situation where a lot of recovery has already happened. So after an executive summary, the report's going to document that recovery to date. That's not normally part of a recovery plan. It's not in the outline, but we think it's a really important part of the story. Uh, recover the community engagement process, uh, the recovery projects themselves, kind of the heart of the plan. Then parallel initiatives, this is recognizing organizations that have done, uh, tremendous work in supporting the recovery. Their work may not, uh, rise to the level of a recovery project, or it may not be continuing, but we want to recognize them. And then finally, a summary of all the community engagement that we've gotten. Uh, we want to be transparent about that, and we think that it's very important to include it in the plan. So notable progress to date, um, the LTRG has been, uh, collecting information from the various jurisdictions, but more important than, I think, a spreadsheet is how it's going to be documented in the final report. So what we're going to do is, uh, work with, uh, with your staff to tell talent's story about their recovery to date. And that's going to be featured separate from other jurisdictions. And the reason we think that's important, because the recovery is different, uh, for each jurisdiction, and your priorities are a little bit different. And we don't want it to get aggregated together in just one kind of, uh, mashup of soup. Uh, dinner needs to be served in courses, and talent should be its own. Uh, so we will be working with you on featuring what you've done in terms of recovery, separate from the other jurisdictions in that section of the plan. And we wanted to be clear about that. But it is worth noting that an awful lot has been done in thirty months alive. Uh, housing has been rebuilt, infrastructure repaired, uh, lives are in the process of being put back together. We all know that there's gaps, and a lot of it still to be done. So the community engagement activities have included, uh, over forty stakeholder interviews now, five public meetings, and we've done those virtual, in-person, in English and in Spanish, uh, open house event, online ideas wall, online interactive feedback map, uh, community survey, which was virtual, in-person, in English and in Spanish, and textbook conversations. The survey was one of the best sources of info. We had almost twelve hundred responses. Uh, the LTRG and supporting partners worked very hard to help us get that out there and, uh, get a big cross-section of feedback. But, uh, it was a wonderful source of information and a lot of consistency with what folks told us. The entire survey is going to be featured in the appendices of our report. And I know the mayor, you had asked us about, um, the survey when we talked to the steering committee, um, a little bit. We have, we don't have a lot of the survey in tonight's presentation, but we'll come back to you in the draft of recovery plan. So one of the things we want to focus on tonight and hear from you about is the, what we call the heart of the plan, which are the recovery projects. And they really include, uh, three topic areas. Post-fire recovery, which is rebuild, outbuilding after the Albieta and South Open Chain fires. These are recovery projects about completing the recovery. Uh, second category is long-term adaptation. This is about evolving to keep pace with the increasing wildfire risk. Unfortunately, we don't live in a static situation. Uh, that's not the way the environment works at the moment. So long-term adaptation is something that's part of recovery. And then the third thing is regional resiliency, bouncing back from issues. It impacted Jackson County pre-fire, but were amplified by the fire. And when you take these three things together, it's truly a holistic approach to community building. And that's what the heart of a recovery plan is, but it's also a way to tell your story about, um, how you've gotten away from a day in recovery and where you're going. I mean, ultimately, the long-term recovery group's mission is to go out of business. The community is, uh, recovered from the fires and back to a point of stability, but better prepared for the next disaster shouldn't happen. So this is the kind of detail that goes into a recovery plan. Uh, recovery plans need to be actionable, so they'll have a, a recovery priority, level, project description, which is much more detailed than we're going to give you tonight, uh, because we're working at a very high level tonight, so we can have a discussion with you. But that's not to say that, uh, that it out. A lead, partners, action steps, cost estimate, potential appropriate, potential resources, return on investment in the timeline. And one thing we want to say about recovery projects is beyond generic, uh, not generic descriptions, but an overarching description, there's another level here that's important because recovery is multi-jurisdictional, which is not always the case. So there has to be within a recovery project, appropriate, uh, a call out or a detail for talent and how they might be working on, say, support for first-time homeowners or homebuyers in the case of this. We just pulled an example project. Or how Phoenix, or the county, is doing that differently. So it's not going to be the same for every jurisdiction for every recovery project. We wanted to highlight that. Okay, so first, post-fire recovery. Um, and at the top of the list is housing, focusing on low-market rate, ownership housing. Uh, the reorgan money is going to be, uh, one of the things that's going to be used, um, in this category, but it has to do with supporting of low-market rate, low-income, moderate income, and attainable in workforce. Uh, ownership housing for former and current homeowners who are fire survivors. So part of it, the reorgan money is really targeted at low and moderate income. Uh, residents who haven't gotten in, back into permanent housing. Attainable in workforce is a little more challenging, because if you're looking, if you don't qualify for the reorgan program by income, make a little too much, you still may not be able to purchase a house at market rate. So two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand to maybe three, twenty to three fifty. We have a huge gap in Jackson County. And I've been on, you know, real estate websites looking for that income setback. You know, good luck. So we have a lot of hard work to do there.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, Mary.
Uh, and I promise not to do this much. Um, do we, is there a definition, a state definition for attainable housing?
Uh, you know, attainable, uh, well, the reorgan money, Alex, is six, uh, up to eighty percent of AMI. And then above that typically, I would just say typically attainable, um, is from, uh, about eighty percent of AMI up to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. And then workforce is from there, the market rate is typically how it works.
And market rate is, uh.
It varies by community, but it's usually a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty percent of AMI.
All right.
And it varies by community based on the cost of your house.
Yeah, I appreciate you verifying this. It changes my thinking. I thought market rate was in the middle of one twenty, but, um, okay. So it sounds to me like the reorgan plan defines attainable housing.
Well, the reorgan plan really, I don't want to say that, the reorgan plan is targeted to low-income and moderate-income, uh, families, households, and their replacement housing if they're fire survivors and their homes haven't been replaced yet. So what we're saying is this recovery project speaks to that, beyond that, it speaks to that. But beyond that, it also speaks to the issue of how we attainable in workforce.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, accelerating, uh, development of affordable housing. We have work to do here, so this has to do with speeding up the creation of affordable housing within, uh, the Albieta fire footprint and other developed areas of Jackson County. And the reason we say that is, uh, the way that tax credits are distributed here, which is how we, primary vehicle for creating affordable housing. The county gets one tax credit allocation typically a year. And the strategy is to distribute it along the I-five corridor, which is where you get points to get, uh, a tax credit deal. So it's not always going to go into the fire-affected footprint, although the recovery in recent years more has, uh, come back into the fire-affected footprint. But, um, affordable housing is still a tremendous need. Jackson County hasn't already said they have up to a six-year waiting list for many of their properties. Uh, support for first-time homebuyers. This is about creating options to allow renters who are fire survivors to own a home. This is also covered by the reorgan program through the, uh, HOP program. The first program was the HARP. I think I got that right. Is that the right acronym? I get my HOPs and HARPs confused sometimes, but this is the HOP program. It's going to be a follow-on. The interesting thing about this program is all the units have to be newly built. That's going to be a requirement, so we don't deplete our existing inventory of housing. So this not only provides, uh, for a critical need, but also provides for the requirement for new housing. So new housing is going to have to be built to support, um, that program. We also have, uh, reducing fire insurance premiums, so this is, uh, to promote wildfire risk reduction standards as a potential approach to reducing residential insurance premiums. And it, uh, uses the institute, or the strategy is really to follow the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety, uh, Standards, which is a nonprofit, supported by insurers to help reduce insurance premiums. We're doing this in other, uh, fire-affected areas where we've seen huge spikes. Residents here told us it is an issue, not for everybody, but a lot of folks have seen their insurance premiums go up. And over time, we've also seen insurers pull out if they perceive the risk or their risk map say the risk is too high. So it's something that we want to get out in front of. Build back brick-and-mortar businesses, something that we've talked extensively with your staff about, both Jordan and Krista. Talent was especially hard hit. So this has to do with supporting infill commercial development and the highway, uh, along the Highway ninety-nine corridor in Phoenix's and Talon's downtown areas. Number five has to do with primary, primarily outside sources of assistance. And then number six has to do with leveraging the city's ability to boost redevelopment by utilizing urban revitalization tools. We know this is a, an issue that's been on the ballot, at least part of this. But it doesn't mean that the city doesn't have important tools for redevelopment already. And this number six is a, an initiative, a recovery project that's still being built out. But it's, uh, in terms of how we're going to define it, but it's very, very important. And then in that first category, the last one is provided for long-term behavioral, um, health services. Uh, and this is a recovery project that's a reminder that sometimes when you work really hard to recover from a disaster, everybody gets just to work right away, heads down, running headlong, and they really don't have time to deal with the mental health issues associated with recovery. What ends up happening about the time you get back into permanent housing and your life, maybe you think is going to settle down, it just all washes over you. And we have a lot of survivor accounts from different communities where this has happened, and it's important to call this out separately. It's an issue that doesn't really, um, run with income levels or, uh, race or anything else. It's just something that communities like yours, which have worked so hard to recover, are probably going to begin to start to see as neighborhoods are reoccupied. And folks who think they should be getting back to normal, they feel guilty because they feel like they should be getting back to normal. But mental health, uh, issues still need to be addressed. So long-term adaptation has to do with adapting to the wildfire risk. And the way we like to characterize this is everybody has a role. It has to do with everything from wildlands and the federal forest lands right down to your own residents. And there are a lot of things in between. So when we think about, uh, the trend lines, they're not going to change. This is always going to be a wild, high wildfire hazard area, and it's likely to get worse in the future. However, um, that doesn't mean that we don't have the opportunity to be prepared. And that's what these recovery projects, um, speak to. So the first one is, uh, working to create fire breaks. We know that the county, um, works on this, applies for grant funding to do this. Uh, and even above that is manage, management of the, um, federal wildlands, which may have become a recovery project. We talked to the county about that yesterday, and then maybe another one added here. But implementing and maintaining fuel breaks between organized area and wildlands to reduce wildfire risk is a proven way to knock down at least some fires. They don't always work. This fire, Jodai Five, your fire, uh, it's still, uh, fire districts will tell you that it's an important tool. One of the challenges we have here is the money, the grant money you get to create these doesn't account for maintenance and the folks that we need for maintenance long-term. So it's like if I gave you grass seed and said, have at it. Well, the problem is I didn't give you a mower, and I didn't give you somebody to load the grates in. That's my analogy, but that's really what the issue with a lot of these things is. You can get grant money to do them, but, but when you talk about long-term adaptation and fire safety, maintenance is so important, and it's, uh, something that the state and the federal government don't really recognize, unfortunately. Um, improving fire safety and evacuation rates, we heard this, it's critically important for residents. We recommend a commissioning and traffic study that would provide for the verifiable data needed to seek funding for improvements along main evacuation routes. Most of these are controlled by the county or the state. But what we've seen is that, uh, and driving, uh, over yesterday in Shady Cove, I mean, you can see on main evacuation routes where there's still overhead power poles that are wood. They will burn in a wildfire break and block evacuation routes. It's well documented. We also have vegetation, large trees that can fall into evacuation routes. And I think here, folks love living in the valley, but you live in a valley, so that means everything gets flooded in the valley. Traffic runs like a river. So evacuation routes are a critical, important, critically important part of adaptation. Um, strengthening the emergency notification system. So this has to do with creating a multi-layered redundant emergency notification system. Uh, county is doing it at the highest level with the overage system. It's, it's gone through significant upgrades since the wildfires. So, and the state's working very hard on that system. But here's the thing, uh, it's well documented that most of us need three forms of notification before we'll leave. We don't believe necessarily the first one. So, and also, one system is never fail-safe. And your city and other cities have their own emergency evacuation, um, procedures. You have to notify the county to turn on the system, notify your residents. So what we're recommending and then discussing yesterday with the county is that you need a multi-layered system. And when we say, you know, how, how could you be notified? It might be, uh, you go outside and see flames, but that's probably a little late. Or you see a neighbor preparing to evacuate, or a first responder comes to your door. They're supposed to be fighting a fire. Um, a sire is an example. Uh, some folks look to the TV, radio, but this is something that we need to continue to work on, because even the overwork system only notifies you right now. They only have time to do an English language message. If you, if you don't speak English, you're not getting a message in a language that you understand. And it just points out why you make redundancy. Um, and we all have a part in this. Of encouraging connected streets. Uh, this is about promoting connected streets with a minimum of two ways in and out for all developed areas. I think it's pretty well documented at this point that, uh, an awful lot of the fire fatalities have to do with number eleven. I know in our work, I can tell you, because we get to see some of the data that doesn't get released publicly, but that's the case. So it really is a serious issue, especially long-haul evidence, but jurisdictions should encourage it, and that's what this recovery project will speak to. We, when we talk about adaptation, uh, and recovery projects in general, they don't all get something to. One jurisdiction or one organization. Number twelve and thirteen are really important and highly what residents can do. You don't ever want the fire to get to all the way to your home. Hopefully, your, your jurisdiction's worked on fuel reduction, and in this case, the county, who's your neighbor, has worked on, uh, the things that they need to do, fire breaks and working with the federal government on fuel reduction, other management issues. But when it gets into the community and it gets to your property, setting standards for fire-safe landscape are critical. And we toured your community, and I won't say I'm a total expert. I know enough to know what's, what doesn't follow, uh, fire-safe landscaping standards and a lot of the properties don't. And our recommendation would be throughout Jackson County, there should be one standard publicized. Whether or not it's required, I think it's really up to jurisdictions. But number twelve is probably the most important thing to protect your home. The fire districts will tell you that's probably even more important than number thirteen, because that's the fuel around your house. And that's why when you have a fire ring, we clearly leave some things away. Uh, and, uh, you don't want it to come down to number thirteen, which is the last one, although we still need to be prepared there, which is promoting fire-resistant, um, home construction. So this is about implementing the wildfire construction provisions in the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. For both number twelve and thirteen, the state has told you, in this state, what you really should do. And they're going to mandate probably number twelve in some places, but, uh, eighty percent of respondents said in our survey they'd be willing to implement firehardening improvements to their homes or property if the cost were reasonable. But what we found even more is that residents don't know what to do. But what we found even more is that residents don't know what to do. So we really believe that just having a standard and politicizing it in 12 and 13 would go a long way to having residents be able to make the decision about how far they're going to go in protecting their property. And they have a role. And then finally, in this category, supporting a fire-safe education. We've met with Oregon State, they have wonderful materials, they can tell you exactly what we need to do. And they are Jackson County-specific. But what we realized in working with them is that establishing more robust and better-funded education programs to train residents about fire-safe construction, fire-resistant landscaping, defensive space is critical. And they're limited by funding and experts to teach. So they only have limited reach. And that's what this recovery project speaks to. And then the third category, regional resiliency. The first recovery project here is institutionalizing and aligning the efforts of the Jackson County Community Long-Term Recovery Group and the Rogue Valley Community Organizations active in disaster so that we can be better prepared for the next disaster. And honestly, one of the reasons we're doing a recovery plan 30 months after and here tonight speaking with you whenever he's exhausted about all the hard work they've done, let's be honest, is because the JCC LTRG took 14 months to get up and running. And then we had a capacity build, no funding, find Karen. She was hiding. Has a lot of work to do. So, but anyway, so we're working on this. And these organizations have a synergistic relationship. But what we wanted to do is be able to hit the ground running the next time. And we're creating a blueprint for that. While making the Bear Creek Greenway safe, residents will be honest that please include this as a recovery project. We know that the envisioned Bear Creek Plan is underway, but we need to make sure that it gets implemented to secure long-term funding, fuel reduction, maintenance, security, and enhancements. You've had a lot of rain this winter. And when you drive up and down I-5 and you walk down into the greenway, it is green right now. The undergrowth is incredible. And then you have the standing dead trees. And it remains a big issue. And the same thing that was kind of a candlestick for the unmade of fire is back. So it's an important thing to keep focused on and that's what that speaks to. Encouraging multilabel communications, your city's very good about this. And actually, technology is really becoming better about this. I think we even heard the city of Shady Cove tells that you can receive communications from them in 30 languages. Because of technology, which is shocking, you know, we didn't used to grow up that way. But they've integrated Google Translator into their communication so you can choose to receive in a lot of different ways. But that's not true for all of us. So encouraging multilabel communications, all notifications, literature, and meetings related to recovery, adaptation, resiliency, government is critical. And then addressing food insecurity and funding. In meeting with the providers, the need is not going away. Long-term funding is critically important and that needs to stay focused. And then rounding the corner and heading for home, expanding transportation options speaks to, as you improve or rebuild roads and upgrade your infrastructure, we need to take that opportunity to incorporate other modes of transportation. And I will say, as a planner, I think over the years, we really missed it. Cities were built out because they're very vehicle-oriented and we never really planned for bikes and pets adequately. But we live in a different time now. I think that you have a lot of really good infrastructure in your city already. But we should always be looking for opportunities to improve it as we upgrade infrastructure. Embracing sustainable development, that has to do with strategies that minimize the negative impact of rebuilding and continuing growth on the natural systems of Jackson County. And then the last one, improving local social determinants of health. This has to do with working to further upgrade the non-medical factors that influence health outcomes. So it's really about community factors. And it's a large umbrella, but it's an important complement to traditional healthcare. So what I'd like to do now, about four more slides, and I would like to hear from you. The parallel initiatives, and I'm just walking you through the elements of the plan. So these are some of the organizations that we've reached out to to document what they've done and their work to date after the fires will be included. We also have, again, an appendices that will include all of the community input that we receive. And then we're going to go through this really interesting initiative, which is preference surveys over the 21 recovery projects that we just shared. And the way this is going to work, we're going to be giving a description and we'll have different ways to have input. Basically, allow us folks to express their preference, thumbs up, thumbs down, and then leave us a note. And each of the recovery projects will have its own write-up. And so one of our next steps, we're going to be doing ongoing follow-up interviews, which we're currently doing. So we'll be meeting with your staff, again, with Jordan and Krista, and talking about how we need to talk about talent and within the recovery projects, how the recovery, how talent needs to be, how the story needs to be told and priorities need to be identified. And then beyond that, if there's anything that we've missed, and I'm sure there is. There's no magic about 21. It seemed like the right scale for your county, but we can add or we can subtract if things fail. Meeting with the jurisdictions, which we're doing now. Preference survey, the thing I just showed you, we're doing social media polling, website polling, in-person voter polling, and virtual meeting polling, June, July events. It's going to be everywhere. And then finally, we'll be issuing a draft of the long-term recovery plan to the jurisdictions for you to review and coming back to round the anniversary of the fires. So that's it for my presentation and we're here to hear from you. I'm going to have a little jacks tomorrow, I can tell you, because I've got too many phones this week, you can see. My voice is probably getting a little bit loud.
Thank you for the great presentation. So we'll take this, I'm here to see, you're open with me back today?
Absolutely. That's wonderful.
Yeah, that's, so I want to open it up to the council. If there's any questions or comments that anybody wants to make. Council Phenomena?
Okay, so this is like probably one question that I've probably even asked before I just started. Just trying to think about this plan and also the whole long-term recovery group. Are you coordinating these efforts or chronicling the progress or actually driving projects that wouldn't happen otherwise? I'm trying to put that together in my head.
So at the end of the day, the Long-Term Recovery Group is a convenor, right? We convene partners around important issues that are identified in community, either through jurisdictions or citizenship or survivor groups, right? To draw attention and focus to those issues and make sure that there are opportunities to develop collaborative solutions. So in the case of this, it's kind of like chronicling role, but it's also checking in and making sure that the partners who are leading those projects have what they need to get it across the finish line. So how do we make sure that we're continuing to tell the story, gather the data that's necessary to support grant applications, right? The way this is laid out, all grant applications ask you to identify a gap. This plan is designed to show those gaps, right? Show all of the successes we've had and where are we trying to go and what do we need to get there? And so the LTRG is really of service to all of these partners, right? The, this plan has 20% signed onto it. And so we will be following up with all of the identified needs and checking in with them, making sure that they're getting the traction they need to move these projects forward. And then the other aspect we talked about, I think it's project number 15 around long-term recovery groups and the co-op, right? It's just making sure that this process, this partnership is institutionalized in a way that we're not waiting 14 months for staffing for an LTRG, right? The co-op is ready to go and get all of the immediate needs met. And in the background, the LTRG is scaling up a lot faster. Again, there will never be another disaster, right? We'll retire and it'll be a bus driver for kiddos.
Council Phenomena?
Yes, just to follow up, so is LTRG going to have continued funding over time?
So right now, I'm just wrapping up our budget. We are well-funded through this next year. We're more than fine on that, and we have reserves going into the next year. To date, long-term recovery groups, 90, 95% of funding is done through private funding. There is a house bill right now, house bill 2849, that is funding specifically for long-term recovery groups. It's $36 million. 18 of that is for individual assistance and disaster case management. The other 18 million of that is to institutionalize and scale up long-term recovery groups so that we have the data systems that we need to manage information, right? Because a lot of what we've seen in this recovery is still that we have this park survivors, right? So that's been a big area, right? So the state wants to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And so the LTRG is positioning itself to make sure that we have that really solid partnership with our co-ed to make sure that both sides of that coin are fully support good.
Any other questions or comments? Council Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments on the fire rise landscaping goal. And I think that's really important and good to have in there. There's some nuance to that discussion and specifically in the ways that, you know, a person who lives in the wildland or an interface is different than a person who lives in town. If you, if your house backs up to a hillside of drought stressed trees, then, you know, then that drought stressed forest may be the greatest significant threat to your home. If you live in a more urban environment, the greatest threat to your home is your neighbor's house being on fire. It's far, far dense, drier, more combustible load of fuel than trees. And in an urban environment, we have an opportunity to maintain our vegetation in a better way. And we had a, in February, I believe it was, we had a symposium with a panel of amazing experts, including fire recologists and others. And really, you know, one of the, I'm forgetting his name, from OSU, Chris Adelman, yes, pointed out that there's really no evidence to show that trees, you know, the well care for trees in an urban environment poses a significant risk to spreading wildfire in an urban environment. And so, you know, we've heard sometimes from residents that people are feeling hesitant about replanting trees. We're really going to need trees as a climate-adapting component. And so it's important to really understand that nuance about how trees in an urban environment are different than, it's a different situation than living in the wildland or the interface. And we don't want to discourage people from planting the trees that are going to allow us to adapt to a warmer climate and have an ecological, you know, thrive ecosystem in the communities over there.
Agree 100%.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, no, trees are not the problem and trees, urban trees aren't the problem. I think one of the things that's incredible that we've seen in the last really two decades is it's quite the age of the urban wildfire where we're having, well, a couple of things have happened. One thing is the Uwi has moved down in collective towns and cities. So now they're in high wildfire hazard areas from, you know, maybe 100 years ago, 50 years ago, 25 years ago, they weren't. So you now have these urbanized areas in the Uwi. The other thing that's happened is that with the climate change and the amplification of weather events, you can get ember pass flowing, you know, from a fire eight miles away in an urbanized area. And what you identified is correct, a lot of the big wildfires, the biggest source of fuel are homes. It's all in all the stuff that we leave in our yards. If you, and to your point, there's a great example in Paradise where Paradise Fire had a site, heavily tree right in the middle of the community with tall pine trees. But they didn't control birds every year. They've got a fire station and that fire came through and wiped out probably 90% of the trees in the community. They didn't kill any of the main trees on that site. And a fire went through there, a low-grade fire. But they didn't, it didn't get up into the canopy because there wasn't fuel below the community. And that's really what the issue is in the wildlands and in the urban area. And I think for residents, I get this, because I went over to Karen's house and I gave her a fire walk last night and looked at her yard and gave her my opinion. But the, I think the issue is just education, like simple tools so you can make a decision yourself, any of you, when you walk around your property to just say, oh, you know, the recommendation from my city or my county is that it doesn't matter where I live, I should probably do these things to make my property safer. And that's pretty important. It doesn't mean not planting trees, you're allowed to plant trees. It's what you put under them. And then the same thing, I'm making my home safer because, I mean, God forbid it gets down to that last line of defense, which is the thermal shut. But there are things you're all going to do over time, like eventually you've got to replace your roof. So if you live in a single-family home and you replace your roof, you can put on a roof that's fire resistant. Or there are other things like putting on vent protection. But it doesn't take a rocket scientist to help yourself out. But it does take the knowledge. And I think just telling everybody, if you live in Jackson County, you really should follow these standards what you require. I agree with you, I love trees too. Don't blame the trees.
I want to mention that on item number 21, can we go back? I just wanted to make sure I read it correctly. Yeah, I appreciate this is an important piece of work. And I know that there's some parallel work going on in example that we, you know, that I heard that they're renewing a community health assessment. And, and, and are you guys talking about the parallel efforts that are happening and how to incorporate?
Yeah, so when you talked about where I was hiding, that's where it was hiding, right? So I have been at the center of community health assessment and improvement process in this valley since 2012. And so the Partnership for Health is one that I helped develop and build. And so you'll notice in the partners that are outlined in this, in a lot of cases, health partners are sort of from left around, right? You don't see the coordinated organizations, you don't see Head Start, you don't see those because they are all locked into all of health and they're going through their CHOP process right now, which is very intensive. And so we, I have been very intentional with that leadership team and been in constant conversation with them about how to dovetail into and support those efforts. And so it's a fluid dance, right? So this is really the jurisdictional aspect. This is really looking at some of those partners who maybe wouldn't see themselves in the social determinants of health, but also are so critical to resiliency, right? We know that early childhood education means that people are more likely to be engaged as citizens and more likely to be aware of the issues that affect their community and more likely to do things like, cut the trees off so it doesn't burn my house down, right? Like things like that, like over time, all of those are mutually reinforcing. And what we're trying to tell the story about here is that maintenance may play a role. And so wherever your jurisdictional authority is, whatever your expertise or your passion project is, and how we put ourselves in there and understand the fabric of our maintenance so we can strengthen it.
That's really great to hear. And, you know, I had an opportunity to read the last CHOP. I had imagined the new one would be terribly different. And I'm sure that there's some effects that the Alita fire had. I would imagine the same framework is going to flow to the top, it's my best guess. And the point I'm trying to make is that I was super impressed with the last assessment and feel like it's a critical piece of, and I'm sure you know that better than I. But it brings to mind that there are, I just want to emphasize that there are efforts like this that go on in the county. And it seems like taking, if you haven't already, taking time to look at what each taking time to look at what each jurisdiction is doing and what they're engaged in, what they have in the pipeline, in terms of anything that can help this piece. I, I, as you start to detail this up, I, I hope to see more of that, more of what you're already done, more of what you see you will be doing.
Well, I was just gonna say, this is a perfect example of where the different jurisdictions are gonna have, what we're gonna wanna differentiate between the different jurisdictions in, say, this recovery project. And it's a good example where Talon got a call out, not only about what you're doing, but what you can do.
Yeah, and so, you know, in the last iteration, the city of Alita was the only jurisdiction that engaged in the CHOP process, right? And so they engaged in it because they saw the benefit of what had happened with the previous one, right? And so there's always room for engagement in those spaces, and we also know that people are struggling incredibly thin and staff are working as hard as they can, right? So it's sort of getting where you fit and where is your enthusiasm, right? We know that, like, Phoenix Talon School District rapidly engaged Rogue Valley Mentoring to make sure that there were support circles available for every sixth grader across the school district, right? And they're continuing that work this year. That also falls into social determinism of health as well as addresses the issues I exemplified in the first bucket, right? The ongoing need of health support for wild fire destroyers, for the fire destroyers, yeah.
Yeah, the CHOP makes a really good example, and then another good example of, really, the point I, I'm hoping to make is, is we're about to start a housing needs analysis in Talon, and that's, that'll be coming up soon. So just kind of understanding what, what everybody is about to do in their work. Again, I'm sure that you're already addressing that, I'm just hoping to see some of those details in, in the more detailed version of this summary.
Very scrilly, scrilly.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm just really giving you examples, I'm sure that every community has something along those lines, and we're gonna do an economic element as well, which I think is gonna be important. We're gonna update the economic elements, we have one already, but it'll be important when we, when we're looking at how this plan will affect our commercial recovery, which, as you well stated, we have a unique impact in Talon.
Yeah, there's a comment I wanna make, is I really appreciate that, that one of the comments you made is that the burns car looks different in different communities and you're working through that burns, I think that's gonna be really important. I appreciate, I really appreciate that recognition, that acknowledgement.
Yeah, the fire didn't discriminate, but it doesn't mean that it affected every community the same. That's just, it's, you know, an insidious thing, but we don't want to lump everybody into the one category, just wouldn't be appropriate. And that's a unique complexity, I'll be honest about it here, because usually each jurisdiction would do its own recovery plan, but it doesn't make sense here. The scale of the jurisdictions and the way the fires happen, it just doesn't make sense. So, again, we're customizing it to the situation.
What I would invite you to take a look at, if you haven't already, is we actually did do a recovery revitalization plan as part of the, it's the outcome from the top urban renewal agency process that we did. So while we didn't choose the tip funding as a means of funding, the outcome of the benefit of that process that we engaged in for about eighteen months, it seemed like, was a really, I think, you know, my hats off to the staff, a really targeted plan that identifies the gaps that we have, that we're seeing in our, in our recovery. Looking at, looking at the resources that have been made available to us through the state and affect all of that, what are the, what are the pieces that are falling through the cracks? And I think that plan identifies a lot of that. I think that's an understatement for you to say that.
Yeah, I would agree. I've, I've read that, not recently, but I did read it, and I would agree.
Yeah, it's outstanding work. Councilwoman Roberts?
Yeah, I'm wondering about your role as far as some of the early things about housing and the CPGTR grants and all of that, I just wonder if that the role of LTRG versus the state, I don't know, I see Alex here. I just, I'm gonna let strike.
Well, Alex is the expert, and I think that he, we would ask him to speak to, I think the, but I can frame it. And when you look to, like, the first recovery project, one of the great things about reorganization has a very targeted focus for maybe the greatest need. But that doesn't mean within that category covers everything, and it hasn't, the money actually hasn't been deployed, but it's very close to being deployed. So it's a recovery project that's in process, and it's part of the recovery project, so it gets framed in there. But beyond that, we have to recognize that, that, you know, we talked about attainable and workforce housing, you can't forget about that, because that initiative isn't designed to fill every gap. And maybe you could speak a little bit more, Alex, to what reorgan and the HARP and the HOP really are targeted to, and where they stop.
Yeah, absolutely. What is?
Um, Alex, can you come to a microphone, this is the recording, get you. Answer the audio from here.
Sure. Could you, um, non-stable or in-house management presence, could see? The, uh, there are a few different things there, but the first, what I want to point out in terms of the really direct connection between the re- reorgan, what we call the CPGTR project, and the recovery plan, is the LTRG along with the cities and, and so Ready, right, are currently working to solicit and invite projects to apply for about ten to thirteen million dollars, depending on, right, you wanna count it, of CPGTR money for infrastructure and economic revitalization. So I would hope and suspect that those partners would really benefit from looking at the, the long-term recovery plan as they are looking at those projects. And, uh, Councilor, relative to your question about, you know, where, where things are at, uh, well, for us, I don't know if Hector, she reached out to you, but I, I asked her just within the last week or so to reach out to you, see if we could come give a study session update on sort of the gamut of priority projects, and we'd be very happy to do that. And in terms of Barry's last point about exactly who we're serving and what income levels, so with home replacement, we're gonna start with serving up to eighty percent of area median income. We can go higher than that. With, with the Home Opportunity Program, the new housing program, we're gonna start with not a hundred percent side, honestly, probably either eighty or a hundred. By stat change, we could go up to a hundred and twenty with that, with that program. And then there's no, there's no cap to how high we could go with HARP. But we have to spend seventy percent of total overall programming funds to benefit folks who are eighty percent of median income at the moment. So while we have a lot of flexibility, we don't have flexibility with all the dollars.
That's a hundred requirement, is it not?
That's right, that's right. And, and it is, is not unheard of to waive it or adjust it. They certainly don't like to do that early in a project, they want, they want to really see good demonstration of this, they has had and serve that low and moderate income population. But if, well, we can demonstrate that, and the fact that the state's contributed probably almost two hundred million dollars to housing recovery, almost all of which started into that same population, which is extremely unusual, I think we've got, we've got a really good case to make. If, if we do collectively, you know, conclude that, that we want the way we're looking at it.
Is there any data available at this time about the potential for need to do that?
Not hard data. We are, one of the things that I'm gonna emphasize when I come back, is when we open the public programs, right, so the peer planning, infrastructure, economic revitalization work is started, the, the key launch for, for individuals and households who are impacted is gonna very likely be, well, will be early summer. We're, we're shooting for late spring, we haven't been that optimistic, it's still gonna be pretty early in the summer. We're gonna open, we're gonna open a portal, so to speak, and there are gonna be two sides. One is that we're, we're going to do a very short eligibility questionnaire to capture that broader need. And then those folks who qualify for phase one of HARP, we then move into the phase one application.
That's a, that's a great idea. I mean, that's a great approach, because in the meantime, we can be preparing for another phase if we need to.
Exactly, it's gonna help us a lot, just, I mean, we do not, we do not, I mean, yeah, we could all talk about the data challenges.
Yeah, right. Councilwoman Roberts?
Yeah, thanks so much for that update. Just wanted to clarify what you said initially, talking to the cities, so you talking to the cities, asking the cities to come forward with projects, the range of ten to thirteen million, I think you said?
That, that's right, so, Jordan is representing the city along the selection committee, and the selection committee just released, or is about to release, the sort of invitation for?
Yeah, the, the invitation to apply, there's gonna be a Q and A period or session on, what can I?
June first at eleven AM.
June first at eleven AM. But yeah, so the, so OHT has allocated thirteen point eight million dollars to Jackson County, and so we are looking at projects that come through, and LTRG's preference is that we are using those dollars to leverage to the Hill, because we have this unique opportunity with these funds to do a ninety-ten match. Historically, it's a fifteen-eighty-five match, but we can do a ninety-ten match, so we can use that thirteen point eight million as a ten percent down payment to secure another ninety percent, right, through the federal system, which is very unusual. And so in whatever way we're able to leverage and maximize that thirteen point eight million dollars, that's really a part of this public case, this thirteen point eight million, you know, will not go far.
No. And that presentation is at Phoenix?
Phoenix City.
Community Center.
Yes, City Center.
City Center, right.
Yeah. Another council chambers.
So am I hearing you say then, in the selection process for your plan, you're gonna be prioritizing projects that leverage additional funding? Or you're gonna be presenting projects that leverage?
That is one of the things that the LTRG is looking out for in those applications. There's, there's a criteria list on the website, and helping in the matrix that was provided on that website as well, jccltrg.org. I think there's a button at the top, yep, there's a button at the top, apply for a period grant today. And so, so yeah, if you want to list a related criteria, that's sort of what we're looking at, but there are five voting entities, right, the state, Talon City, Phoenix, Jackson County, So Ready, Southern Oregon Regional Economic Development.
Inc.
Inc.
And the Long-Term Recovery Group, so.
Councilwoman Roberts?
So, sorry, I just mean, so the people that are applying are gonna be like, you know, nonprofit developers, the housing authority, is that, is that the kind of people that are applying, or private developers?
So the, the, in pod categories, the four types of projects that are eligible for funding would be planning, so that could be recovery planning or mitigation, planning mitigation of future disasters. Economic revitalization, which could be focused on individual businesses, micro businesses, or, you know, a, a commercial area. Infrastructure, which is defined pretty broadly as an ESG, so public facilities, if you, if it's, it's a building, except for buildings for general government purposes, generally eligible. But, so the infrastructure, again, we either have a tieback to the, to the recovery, an unmet need from the recovery, or we're before looking towards mitigation of future disasters. So those are, those are the three areas, and they're either, as I said, either backwards looking to recover from a disaster, or forwards looking towards mitigation of future disasters.
So these could be like the cities that sell a supply for this?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Local governments, special districts, yeah. And, and we made clear that nonprofits could apply directly under the economic revitalization and mitigation. Do you want planning and infrastructure to be right by the jurisdiction? Well, some, some kind.
Um, Jordan sent in some written comments, did you get those?
Yes, and Jordan, I spoke yesterday, I turned, walked her through some of those pieces as well, so she, she felt comfortable with where we landed, but yeah, we already continue to go back and have conversations with both her and Justin to get the level of detail that is really missing at this point, right? But it's still in work, so.
Did everybody else have a chance to read the comments? Yeah, great. Yeah, I thought they had a little bit of comments.
I'd just like to acknowledge that it was really tough for us, we erred heavily on the, on the side of leaving local flexibility. That left a lot of work for the, for the, for you all to do in terms of deciding exactly what process and exactly what kind of criteria that you wanted to use. So thank you for all the work that you've done, and sharing it with some of the other regions so they can create with you all as well.
Yeah, the whole process has been amazing from, from reorgan and the partnerships that have come out of this in order to make, in order to bring this resource to our communities. There's just no part of it that hasn't been really great work. And what I, I, what I want to hope, you know, I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to say, and this includes the partnerships with our staff as well, is, is that I've been most impressed with this effort's, really authentic efforts to hear from the folks that are most impacted. And hearing after hearing, some of, some of which you have photographed in your presentation, but also some of the earlier hearings that, that stated when the HUD funding first became available. And then you can't look at the plans, both with the peer funding and the reorgan funding, you can't look at those plans and not see all those voices that we would miss, you know, participating in the early stages, and it's just, it's been really heartening to, to see that actually happen, you know? And that, that, with, with respect, sometimes lip service is given to that process, and really, I really feel like this is an example where y'all walked the talk and, and did some great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I, I would say that, I think in both, both processes reflect community leadership, down years, demand that that be the case. What both community leaders, established community leaders and emerging, emerging community leaders as well, I think we were pushed hard on that, and I think, and they all come to a lot there for it.
It's been really also heartening to see the emerging leaders come through this process, yeah. Thank you very much for, everybody, for all the work, you know, the work that this council did as well, and the staff, and really proud of this process. Any other questions or comments? Martha, please come forward and take questions.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman, my name is Martha, I'm a senior business board. I wanted to highlight and emphasize the next steps that there is presentation preview, and this is the same thing that I tell to many of the city councilors, they're working on something in my respective community. The next step, when we will be doing as a group, and we're going to be asking the community to prioritize vote that may directly direct some focus points of the next strategies, that is where your work will continue. So I join Mayor Darby in thinking of your work, and yet there is more work to come. And while I can't give legal advice, I'm directing anybody to do anything, you are the awesome esteemed elected officials. When it's time to politicize the opportunities to engage some more, this will be your this will be a good opportunity to use the newsletter that the city can have, the newsletters that our partners have, as well as your digital social media pages, meaning the online campaign social media pages, to make sure that the public knows that we're all just engaged, and to make sure they know how to get involved in poster loading, online loading, and any other forum that will be an opportunity to engage some more. So Mary, thank you. I join you in thanking the council. There's going to be a lot more engagement work, but we're closer to having a very solid, inclusive plan. As you said, the work is centered on subscribers and will survive the community, but it has to be inclusive of all of those impacted by the past disasters and helping possibly deal with a future disaster.
It doesn't have one as a whole. Fluffy, so this is not a recording studio. Thank you, Martha, a good reminder, we're not on the hook yet. Alright, any other comments or questions? Yeah, anything from, any residents, any questions? Alright, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and pay it away. Thank you again.
Thank you.